Okay. Okay, welcome everyone to the April twenty fifth two thousand and twenty three Planning and Zoning Commission meeting down at Waterford. This is a web based meeting, so we are operating under the following procedures. The meeting is being audio and video recorded. The video recording will be available within twenty four hours and will be posted on the town of Waterford's planning department website. To ensure good sound quality, the default rule for this meeting is that everyone will remain on mute unless they are speaking. If an attendee creates an audio or video disruption, the Zoom moderator may place them on mute or remove them from the meeting if the disruption continues. We will not use the chat feature in this meeting. Up for the public hearing portion of this meeting, public comments will only be accepted during the public hearing portion. The chair will announce when the hearing is open and will ask for public comment. Public comment will not be accepted after the hearing is closed. We appreciate your attendance at this meeting. Should you have any questions about the process, you may call our staff at eight six zero four 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 five eight one three between the hours of eight A M. and four P M. Monday through Friday. And with that, I turn over to the chair.
Thank you, Mark. Welcome, everyone, to tonight's planning and zoning meeting. Can you take a role to see who we have here?
Okay, yeah. Uh, taking the role Greg Massid.
Here.
Tim Bleesdale.
Here.
Tim Condorino.
Here.
Darren Barnett.
Here.
Victor Eversol.
Says he's connecting to audio on my screen.
Yeah, it says that on ours too, so I believe he's here.
There he goes.
Victor, you here? Victor, you here?
Yeah, I see. I see Victor on the screen. And Joe DeBono. All right.
And 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 for the record, Bert Shannard is not here.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, I don't. So we don't have any alternates. We have a full state item number two approval of the March twenty eight twenty twenty three meeting minutes. Anyone want to make a motion for that?
I'll move that we approve those minutes.
I'll second Karen.
Seconded to approve. The twenty eighth meeting minutes all in favor?
Hi.
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 Okay, oh, uh, five to nothing. Uh, application number three, application receipt. We have a P L dash twenty three dash six application by Melissa Oconero Hume to amend the Waterford zoning regulation section one definitions home occupations in section three point one one point one one parking home occupations public hearing required by six twenty nine twenty three. Wendy, can we get that scheduled for sometime in maybe the first meeting in June?
We can do that June thirteenth.
Yeah, right. Have it by May, the end of the second meeting in May or no?
Uh, no, the actually her um, uh, her agent won't be here until June, so.
Okay, but June thirteenth is good for that. Okay. Um, second one is P L twenty three dash seven request of Kingstown Properties LLC applicant and Mary Archibald trustee owner for a site plan approval for forty seven unit multifamily rental community for property located at one oh nine R and one thirty one Clark Lane, R twenty zone in accordance with dedicate general statutes eight dash thirty G and a shown on plans entitled proposed affordable housing development one thirty one and one oh nine R Clark Lane, Waterford, Connecticut, action required by six twenty nine twenty three. Um, we talked earlier today, we're going to put that up for the first meeting and do it as well, six thirteen.
Okay.
Item number four, public hearing P L dash twenty three dash four application of the Waterford Planning and Zoning Commission to amend the following sections of the Waterford zoning regulations sections uh, definition sections three point nine point eleven, three point nine point twelve. You know what? I'm gonna I'm gonna go out of order on this one and do the P L twenty three dash five first because this is our application. So let's get the applicant's application out of the way first so they can they can move on. Um, let's do P L twenty three dash five request of Mago Way Realty Owner and Applicant for Site Plan Special Permit Approval for New Pickleball Court and Clubhouse at three fifty eight and three sixty Mago Point Way, M P D Zone in accordance with sections fourteen A point three nine fourteen A point three fifteen, twenty two and twenty three of the zoning regulations and as shown on plans entitled Site Plan Development Plans. I'm sorry, Site Development Plans, New Pickleball Court and Clubhouse, three fifty eight dash three sixty Mago Point Way, Waterford, Connecticut, zero six three five, prepared for Mago Way Realty LLC date February sixth twenty twenty three, public hearing required by six one twenty three, but we're going to have that this evening.
Mister Chairman.
Yes.
I just want to put a note for the record that Commissioner Crum uh, has joined us. Um, and so just she joined just a few seconds ago.
Okay, as the alternate, so um, this come, we don't have a spot open tonight. We have a full slate of commissioners, so you will be acting as an alternate tonight, okay? Okay. Okay, can we um, we open up the hearing? Do you have any comments first?
Yep, yes, we got an exhibit list.
Okay.
Exhibit one A, these are application nine pages. Exhibit one B, transmittal letter, three pages. Exhibit one C, supporting documents. Exhibit two, site development plans, new pickleball court and clubhouse three fifty eight and three sixty Mago Point Way, Waterford, Connecticut, oh six three eight five, prepared for Mago Way Realty LLC date February sixth twenty twenty three. Exhibit three, floor plans. Exhibit four, public hearing notice run in the day newspaper, April eleventh twenty twenty three and April eighteenth twenty twenty three. Exhibit five, certificates of mailing. Exhibit six, response to comments. Exhibit seven, shared parking plan, two pages. Exhibit eight, elevation and planting plan. Exhibit nine, lighting samples, seven pages. Exhibit ten, site development plans. New pickleball court and clubhouse, three fifty eight, three sixty Mago Point Way, Waterford, Connecticut, oh six three eight five prepared for Mago Way Realty LLC dated February sixth twenty twenty three, revised April sixth twenty twenty three. Exhibit eleven is a staff report dated April twenty fifth twenty twenty three, and exhibit twelve PowerPoint presentation. That's the exhibits.
Hey, great. Is mistress, is the applicant here?
Uh, this is attorney Sweeney representing the applicant.
Great.
Thank you, Chairman Mossad, and I certainly appreciate the courtesy of moving us up in the agenda. Most commissions don't do that, and it's a class move, and I appreciate it.
We will take the review as well, you know, out of order. We'll do that before the next public hearings.
Thank you, sir. Uh, good evening. For the record tonight, my name is Bill Sweeney. I'm a partner in a land use attorney uh, with the law firm of Tobin Carberry in New London, Connecticut, and as always, I appreciate the opportunity to appear before you. I represent Mago Way Realty LLC, a Connecticut limited liability company and the owner of the former J M S Auto Repair Facility, which was located at three fifty eight to three sixty Mago Point Way in Waterford. Got a presentation I'd like to share with you uh, tonight. Uh, if I could be given sharing privileges.
Okay. Okay, you're all set.
Thank you. Can everybody see that? Okay?
Yes.
Excellent. Uh, my client uh, tonight has submitted an application for a special permit and site plan approval for the adaptive reuse of this property as a new private pickleball club with seasonal outdoor dining. Some of you may not be familiar with pickleball. Um, I certainly wasn't until uh, last year, but it's a popular and rapidly growing sport. Um, it's similar to tennis, ping pong and batman, and you play with either two or four players who hit a perforated hollow plastic ball, similar to a wiffle ball in many uh, cases back and forth over a net using a solid face paddle until one side scores. Uh, it's become very popular uh, throughout the country and particularly uh, popular lately in southeastern Connecticut. I was mentioning to somebody the other day, I'm working on a couple other pickle pickleball courts for other clients uh, here in southeastern Connecticut right now. Uh, as you're aware, recreational uses such as recreational clubs are permitted by special permit in um, the underlying Mago Point uh, district, uh, and outdoor dining is permitted by site plan approval uh, as well. Uh, joining me tonight um, is Barbara Deversa. Barbara is a principal of the applicant and property owner, Mago Way Realty. I have Seamus Moran here, who's the project civil engineer with H and H Engineering Associates, and also have Sean Rowe with Rowe Design. All of them uh, will be available if you have any specific questions about our proposal. Uh, as some of you are aware, Barbara and her husband Paul live part time here in Waterford, and they have redeveloped or are currently redeveloping a number of properties at Mago Point. They've reinvested significant private money and resources into this neighborhood and in the Waterford community. Uh, this is a public hearing tonight because there's a special permit involved. I'll try to be brief, but I do need to build a record. I'm going to give you a brief overview of the project. I'm going to highlight some key aspects uh, and the compliance that we've shown to the underlying zoning requirements, but I'm going to rely primarily for the uh, for the benefit of time on our previously submitted application materials. I'm just going to move, see if I can. Here you go. Um, so uh, the photo before you is a picture of the site. Uh, you may be familiar with it if you've been down to Mago Point recently. Uh, my client actually purchased this half acre property last year, and admittedly, when they purchased it, they didn't have a specific development plan uh, at the time. Uh, the owners of the former J M J M S Auto uh, facility were looking to sell, and quite frankly, the property's appearance and the long time use as a repair facility um, located uh, at the entrance of Mago Point was not really an attractive gateway to the surrounding neighborhood. Um, the diverses actually decided to buy the property without a detailed plan in place for its reuse, but they wanted to make sure it could be redeveloped appropriately, and they wanted to make sure it would be reused in a way that was more compatible um, with the steps that many property owners, including themselves, are making to shape Mago Point into an attractive new destination in Waterford. Uh, last summer, uh, as their plans began to take shape, they first obtained approval for the construction of a pickleball court uh, and eventual installation of pollinator gardens that would begin the transformation of the property from what is what was a completely impervious site with concrete and broken asphalt to one that hopefully would showcase the beauty and the vibrancy of the area. Um, the greatest challenge, though, to any redevelopment of this site is the fact that the property itself is located within a coastal flood plain, and the base flood elevation or the B F B on this site is eight feet above grade. If you can try to imagine that, there would be eight feet of floodwater on this site during the hundred year storm. That places a significant obstacle on any redevelopment of the site uh, specifically for new construction, but even for renovation of an existing building like the old repair station. Uh, it was quickly determined that a new building was not feasible because of costs, but even the renovation of the existing repair facility, which is just concrete block construction, was also similarly challenged because of this floodplain substantial improvement threshold. Um, because the building again, which is just concrete block construction, is only valued at a hundred thousand dollars. Any renovations that are made to the building have to be carefully designed per your FEMA floodplain requirements uh, that are incorporated in the zoning code. Those improvements to the building can only be uh, can only total fifty percent of the appraised value or fifty thousand dollars. Um, as you can imagine, a renovation project on a commercial structure these days um, fifty thousand dollars doesn't go a long way, and and you, the only way it can work is if you can be really creative and work hand in hand with the town to try to find a way to see a new vision or a new life um, for a property like this. I'm going to bring up my site plan now. Um, this is the uh, the most recent version of the site plan um, that we submitted. Uh, the diverses weren't scared away from these challenges. They've developed that at Mago Point before. Um, and so instead, they developed an innovative plan, working sort of hand in hand with your with your staff to convert the um, repair building, which is located here on the plan um, and into a private clubhouse for their pick for a pickleball club. And they would replace then all the cracked paved parking lots with lawns, gardens, pavers, and even an opportunity for a seasonal food truck. Um, just to go quickly through the site plan, and again, we can always go back and get into any detail, additional detail that you desire. Exterior to the building along its front and and one of its sides, we are proposing a detached pergola. Um, the pergola will be freestanding. It will be not not be connected to the building, and we're doing that um, uh, for two reasons. One, to break up that sort of um, monolithic um, uh, appearance, uh, provide some shadows and some additional um, features and interest on the building, but we're also building it freestanding, so it's not connected to the existing building, and under FEMA's floodplain regulations, because we aren't actually affixing it to the building, it doesn't count toward our fifty thousand dollar budget uh, for substantial improvement. So again, an innovative way to try to make some improvements to the property improvements that floodwaters will flow right through um, without um, violating the FEMA floodplain requirements. Um, we're also um, um, going to be putting in, and I'll have a picture to show you in a couple minutes uh, on the front of the building in the repair doors or the repair bays, the overhead doors are being replaced with glass paneled um, uh, doors that allow natural light into the building and really dress up the exterior facade of the structure. Uh, in fact, we were at the design review board earlier today, and we got unanimous approval from them, and they were really um, uh, surprised and 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 very happy with the sort of the creative ways that we were trying to improve this site, working within the floodplain restriction that we have. In addition, on the site, we're providing a semi circle um, access drive uh, to the site. This is going to be actually um, laid out with permeable pavers, pavers that allow rainwater to soak through, so not asphalt, not concrete, but permeable pavers um, as for this access drive to the property, and we're going to be establishing four onsite um, parking spaces um, in this location, including a handicapped accessible one. Uh, our parking calculations per the Mago Point regulations require a total of six spaces um, for this project. Um, four we're providing onsite. The Mago Point regulations allow you within twelve hundred feet to sight offsite uh, parking spaces. The diverses own the properties across the street um, from this location, and so we have designated additional space behind the cafe and another space in the office parking lot, which are over uh, in a in a beyond what those uses need to meet our six space um, um, uh, requirement. There's also five additional overflow spaces within the office building parking lot, which we've also designated if there's a need for more parking, and we're also creating some on-street parking as well. Um, part of the project includes the installation of sidewalks as required by the Mago Point regulations along the entire frontage on Mago Point Way, and we're actually widening the road again, inconsistent with the requirements of the Mago Point District to create these on-street parking spots, and we're going to create a total of five additional spots. When you add those all together, we have close to twenty spots just available um, for this use, well in 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 excess of what's required by zoning. Um, we're still working out all the details on the outdoor dining program, but we do have an outdoor dining component. We have a permeable paper pad here for a food truck. Um, the diverses may actually operate them themselves, or they maybe work with one or more three party uh, third parties to actually provide that food truck service at this pad. This is a standalone pad. There aren't utility connections to it. Um, and this would be a temporary food uh, truck location. The food truck would be available to the general public, um, and we do have a small seating area on a lawn with eight uh, seats um, to basically accommodate um, uh, the food truck operations as well. Um. I've talked about the sidewalk already. One of the things I'd point out, the new pickleball court, the pickleball court is already constructed and was constructed last year, but look, I think what's really important to see is how much of the site is not being developed, and literally more than half the site is being left for landscaping and plantings, and I'll show you some additional drawings later to show you the extent to which we're trying to beautify the site and really uh, make it green and lush with landscape and and really carefully designed gardens uh, as well. Um, just a couple other things about the operations. This entire operation, the clubhouse, um, the pickleball court, the food truck, these are seasonal uses. Um, we're going to run basically um, November, uh, April to November each year. There will be no operations, no activities on the site during the winter months. Uh, and and in addition, you know, we don't see a lot of employees involved with this. We may have a a maintainer for the clubhouse who visits um, periodically, uh, and then whoever's operating the food truck onsite, but this is not a a heavy uh, or intense use of the site in any um, uh, way. Uh, go to the next slide. This is an elevation that um, Mark asked us to uh, put together for uh, the building. Um, again, we're putting that pergola, that new freestanding wood pergola along the front and wrapping around the side of the building. Um, the uh, we'll have the new uh, glass framed garage doors uh, filling in the uh, repair bays. We're going to be giving a fresh paint, white paint on the stucco and uh, concrete block surface on the front. We're going to be reusing the existing store uh, door and the existing windows for our lobby area. Uh, but that, uh, I think the these little touches that we're we're using um, to try to dress up the building, plus the additional landscaping, some of which is shown here and some which will should be shown on our landscape plan in a moment uh, that I'll share with you, I think really clean up the property and make it look a lot more presentable than it is today. It really allows us to uh, productively reuse the property for a use that's a lot more compatible than an auto repair facility. Uh, I just want to show you quickly the inside of the building. Uh, this is the actual um, uh, repair station, and this is our layout. Um, you may ask, well, where are you spending your fifty thousand dollars? And I can tell you the vast majority of our budget, our substantial improvement budget is being used on code improvements inside to meet handicap accessibility requirements for the bathrooms and also to upgrade some broken and outdated building systems. Um, the interior of the space, um, uh, it basically consists of a small entry lobby, mechanical room, two bathrooms, one that is accessible from inside and one that's actual actually accessible from outside. And then the 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 balance of the space, basically the repair bays, would be converted into a lounge for um, the private club. This would be sort of a casual, comfortable sitting area where people could gather before or after they play. Again, our hours of operation uh, for this facility are from dusk to uh, from dawn to dusk. There's not really any night activities here. We do have a coffee bar um, that we are proposing uh, in this corner of the room as well. Uh, but again, the idea is to create sort of a casual um, space for club members who may be interested in joining the pickleball club um, and and being able to use that space. Um, I think what's interesting um, about this, the building is um, is served by public water and sewer, but um, we've also tried to do some innovative things in terms of the interior decoration, so I'll show you this plan. Um, the inside of the building, if you've ever been inside that building, you know that it's all concrete block uh, interior walls. It's not attractive. The the windows are sort of old and dated, uh, and we really don't have the budget to to build new interior stud walls or or really refit it. So we worked with the town and with John Mullin and particularly with Steve Cardell um, to come up with a creative way to do something different inside, to really dress it up, but not violate the FEMA floodplain standards. And so we're we're doing something that is is very innovative, and that's basically hanging wall systems. Um, these are removable walls that actually can be hung into place on the masonry, um, and they basically hang like you would hang a painting or a picture in your house. They hang on a a French cleat um, here, and so we install these French cleats onto, which are basically just strips of wood um, with a groove. You hang that on to the wall, and you can pick up these panels, and and we're looking to do all reclaimed wood on the inside. These wood panels, you can lift them up and hang them on the wall and provide basically a new surface for the wall. The hanging wall is not actually affixed to the interior of the masonry, and so it is not an actual improvement um, to the building. It's treated as if it was art or a piece of furniture. And we actually reviewed this closely with Steve Cardell uh, and to make sure that we were consistent with um, floodplain uh, requirements, and he's agreed and given that to us in writing. So we're going to be able to do these removable panels within the building um, and and really dress up the inside without violating any of the FEMA floodplain requirements, which we think is a sort of innovative way to to uh, attack the problem. Um, we are changing the lighting pretty dramatically on the site. If you've been out there right now, you know there are basically security floodlights on the building, and there are um, light poles in the parking lots with gigantic um, uh, fixtures that are basically spotlights, floodlights. Uh, I I was saying to the uh, design review board today, the lighting here is basically like that of a car impound lot. Um, we're taking all of that out. We're removing all of those lights, and we're completely redoing the lights, and we're replacing them with a variety of low voltage and full cutoff lighting features. Uh, around the building and the pergola itself, these are shown with the yellow dots. We're installing these um, sconces, which are full cutoff downward casting L E D lights. Um, they shine just down onto the ground. Again, this is not a facility that's going to have a nighttime operation. Um, but again, we still need for safety and security. We do need some lighting, particularly during dusk times. Um, but these lights would be put around the building, and that this is the the fixture over here in the lower left hand corner. Uh, the blue dots represent um, these foot candle lights. Um, these footlights um, with basically L E D lights. They're just a a foot off the ground. They shine light directly down um, very low, very low intensity, but they allow for safety for people to be able to see obstructions, be able to uh, move on the paved walkway and the paved accessway as well as the walkways uh, leading to the pergola, uh, leading to the court and around the court as well. We also have some in the in the eating area as well, if there's some people dining at dusk time. Uh, we also have some additional landscape lighting uh, which is shown in the orange. Uh, this is directional um, L E D lights to um, illuminate at low intensity actual specimen trees that are being planted. And again, these are 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 very low intensity, um, basically there for aesthetic purposes only. Uh, we also, um, you know, it's interesting, um, when you have somebody on your team who's sort of uh, an owner applicant, who's actually really into gardening, and and if those of you might know Barb Deversa knows that she's really an expert gardener. Uh, she's been a big proponent of pollinator um, gardens here in Waterford. Um, she's developed um, some pollinator gardens and pollinator pathway pathway um, uh, gardens on some of her other properties across the street, uh, and she's looking to really uh, sort of outdo herself on this uh, project. Uh, the entire sort of left hand side of the site, which is three fifty eight Mago Point Way, is going to be completely developed as as a large scale landscape garden um, that's really based around uh, pollinating uh, plantings. So there is going to be a a large lawn area in the center surrounded by a walk, a stone dust walking trail, um, and we're going to have a variety of roses, dahlias, other poll- uh, pollinating plants. We're going to have a number of trees, uh, apple trees, um, magnolias, weeping willows, a a lot of specimen ornamental trees added to this. Um, and she's picked, really taken a lot of time to pick native plants um, to spread throughout the entire site uh, around the the pickleball court, along the buffer where there is no plantings. There's literally not a single landscape planning on this property right now. Um, other than what Barb's done around the around the um, uh, the court. Uh, this this site is going to be completely landscaped. It's going to be beautiful. It's going to be park-like. And and really, if you can imagine driving into Mago Point, instead of having an old auto repair facility with junk cars in the parking lot, you're going to drive in and you're going to see this beautiful, basically an entire lot that is completely landscaped as 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 an ornamental garden um, that has that pollinator um, uh, value as well, and then you're going to have the pickleball clubhouse and the and the court. We think it's a just a dramatic improvement, not just for this property, but for everybody who's visiting Mago Point. This is going to be the first thing you see as you turn the corner and start to enter the the uh, the area. So I think what I, this is my last slide in my presentation tonight. Um, and I think it's it it sort of highlights the area that, you know, that we're we've been talking about and and its relationship to everything else. This sort of uh, uh, dirt circle is where these that garden landscape area is going to be. You can see where the pickleball clubhouse is going to be, and the court isn't on this drawing because the 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 picture's a little old, but the court is over here. Uh, it's really going to clean up that entire entranceway, and and I think um, you know, I think at the end of the day, I think this project certainly meets the is consistent with your plan of conservation development and your special permit criteria. I would ask you to to refer to the narratives that I submitted with the application. I go into quite some depth about our compliance, but just a few things I think I I want to point out in in closing tonight. About our compliance, but just a a few things I think I I wanna point out in in closing tonight. Uh this is an adaptive reuse project. We're trying to take this former automobile repair facility. And um what we're doing to the site is entirely consistent with everything in that the P O C D directs the commission to do at Mega Point. As well as the Mega Point redevelopment plan, which was the impetus and the starting point for the Mega Point District Regulations. Um I wanna remind you that the Mega Point District, um its purpose is to allow for a mixture of land uses, which maintain. A waterfront village ambiance, enhance the vital vitality of the district and attract visitors to the area. In accordance with the P O C D with emphasis on waterfront access. I think this use, along with many of the other uses, including the new restaurant that just opened. Um the event facility that opened a couple of years ago, these are all of these uses collectively and what the diverses have done. All collectively are are really changing the nature of what Mega Point is in a real positive way. I think also, you know, in your plan of development, you talk a lot about trying to redevelop underutilized and uh partially vacant sites. And trying to bring them into productive reuse that adds something to the community. And this is certainly gonna add a new and vibrant seasonal recreational use with some limited outdoor dining. And we think this is, again, this adds another catalyst to try to get other people and other property owners down at Mega Point. To reinvest in their properties, reimagine their properties uh to be something more than they are today. Um I think what we've done, we've done under these very, very strict floodplain restrictions. And I think we've been tried to be very creative and innovative in in doing that. And and I think it's been a successful, the plan that we've shown shown you. And we hope to get your support tonight for both our special permit uh and site plan approval. Um that's all I have for you this evening. Again, um um Barb Deversa, um our engineer, our 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 designer. Are all here. If you have any specific questions, and I can go back and forth through our slide deck and bring up any image that you want uh to take a look at. Thanks.
Thank you. We have the screen back, John? Thirty twenty, just so you know, our regulations in Waterford are probably the most liberal of any of them on the floodplain. We moved that down from ten years to two years. So we did that.
Decision, a terrific decision.
We did that several years ago to try to help people that are in these zones and um. Two years was was pretty good compared to any of the other towns around, I think. You would know better, but I I think we tried to do a good job for that. Without eliminating it, because we can't eliminate it completely, so.
Well, and I think I think it particularly the the buildings that are reused. You certainly have new buildings like the office buildings. That um uh Paul and Barb have already built down there that meet the requirements, but for those existing buildings that have been renovated. Under the substantial improvement threshold, that's a great tool. Every two years, you can sort of go back and make some additional improvements. So um you know, I I'm sure I know that the new restaurant that opened, I'm sure that's gonna be taking advantage of of that. And and you're right, you know, your regulation is is one of the better ones to work with in this area.
So do you have anybody else that that you wanna present?
No, I might, you know, I thought just for the interest of time, I would do the presentation, but I have everybody here if you have specific questions.
Okay, let's see if the commission has any any questions before we open up to the public. Anybody have any specific questions while the slide deck is fresh? Tim, Tim, Karen, Vic, Doris?
I have a quick question, just in reference to uh tanks, obviously from the station have been removed. And I like the lifts lifts inside.
Yes, everything's been, everything's been removed and um and remediated, taken care of. So um and and we we're not putting anything like that back. One of the key aspects of this project. Um for those of you may be familiar with sort of the building code changes, there's new energy efficiency requirements that are required even for for renovation. And one of the reasons why the entire site is seasonal, not just the outdoor areas, is um we're working with Steve Cardell. We don't have to make some of the energy efficiency changes to the building because we're willing to close in the fall. And so we can really not have to do the upgrades to HVAC um systems that you would have to if you had a year round use. And that keeps us under the budget. Otherwise, we would never be able to do it um for the fifty thousand dollars we have.
All set, Tim?
Yes, thank you.
Anybody else? Victor, Tim, Karen, Doris, any questions? Okay, can we open it up to the public now? Okay, if any member of the public wish to speak with respect to. Application PL twenty-three dash five request of Mega Way Realty for site plan, special permit approval for new pickleball court and clubhouse. At three fifty-eight, three sixty mega point way. Searching through the screens here, I don't see anybody. Gonna ask two more times. Um any member of the public wish to speak with respect to PL dash twenty-three dash five request of Mega Way Realty owner and applicant for site plan, special permit approval. For new pickleball court and clubhouse at three fifty-eight, three sixty mega point way. Okay, one more time. Any member of the public wish to uh uh address the commission through this public hearing for PL twenty-three dash five. Request of Mega Way Realty owner and applicant for site plan, special permit approval for new pickleball court and clubhouse at three fifty-eight, three sixty mega point way. Okay, having nobody wishing to speak, can we have a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to close.
Okay, motion made by Tim Condino to close the public hearing second.
I'll second that, Greg.
Seconded by Victor Eversole. Uh all in favor of closing public hearing? So you can probably say hi.
Hi.
Hi. Okay, all. Um so that's it for that. Why don't we move this right to application review. PL twenty-three dash five request of Mega Way Realty owner and applicant for site plan, special permit approval for new pickleball court clubhouse. At three fifty-eight, three sixty mega point way, MPD zone, in accordance with sections fourteen point fourteen eight point three nine, fourteen eight point three fifteen. Twenty-two and twenty-three of the zoning regulations, and as shown on plans titled site plan development, site development plans, new pickleball court and clubhouse. Three fifty-eight, three sixty mega point way, Waterford, Connecticut, zero six three five, prepared for Mega Way Realty LLC. Date February sixth, twenty twenty-three. Any member of the commission want to discuss this? Or make a motion?
I have a comment.
Sure.
Karen, I I think this looks like a really nice project and it's an interesting reuse of a. An old building, so I I'd like to compliment the applicant on thinking outside the box on this one. Thank you.
Thanks, Karen. Anyone else? Okay, did you um? The applicant has done a great job in that area on all the properties and thi- this is a very, very nice use of this. Um one day I'll pick up pickleball, but right now I'm still on the tennis court, so it'll ruin my tennis swing. But one day, I'll play pickleball.
Um but we'll see you out there.
It's a great, it's a great project. Thank you for all your investment in Waterford and for Mega Point Way, Mega Point especially. We uh very much appreciate it. Anyone comments or someone wanna make a motion?
I I can make a motion, Greg.
Okay.
Um. So I am going to um. Reference the findings and um. Conditions that that were contained in the uh the staff report on this. Um and I'm gonna uh move that we approve with modifications the site plan for. Uh the new pickleball court and clubhouse with seasonal outdoor dining application uh PL twenty-three dash five. At three fifty-eight and three sixty mega point way with conditions one through three that are contained in our um. Our staff report and adopt findings one through seven of the staff report as well.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
I'll second.
Okay, seconded by uh motion made by Tim, please, they'll seconded by Tim Condorino. Uh any other discussion on this matter or ready for a vote? Okay, all in favor of PL dash twenty-three dash five? Saying if I'm saying hi?
Hi.
Hi. Okay, I heard five, five for nothing. Thank you. Um.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to say, just wanted to say thank you to uh both John and Mark too, who are really instrumental in. Working with uh my client to make this a reality, so we wanna thank you for the cooperation and the partnership.
Great, thank you.
Have a good night, everybody.
Thank you so much. Thank you all.
Okay, let's go back to a public hearing for uh twenty-three dash uh see, I'm sorry, PL dash twenty-three dash four. Application of the Waterford Planning and Zoning Commission to amend the following sections of the Waterford Zoning Regulation, section one, definition sections, three point nine point eleven. Three point nine point twelve, three point thirty-six accessory apartments, three point three nine accessory dwelling units, four point one point seven, four point two point eight. Five point one point seven, five point two point eleven, six point one point eight, six point two point eleven, six A point four point six. Seven point one point nine, seven A point two point seven, eight point one point seventeen, ten point two point sixteen. Seventeen point one point eleven, seventeen point two point three, as they relate to accessory dwelling units. Do we have anything for the record?
Yes, I love, I'll read the exhibit, listen to the record. Uh exhibit one A is the application, nine pages. Exhibit one B, proposed new zoning regulation. Proposed new zoning sections, four pages. Exhibit one C, the existing zoning regulation, section three point three six. Exhibit one D, existing zoning regulation, section three point three nine. Exhibit two is the town of Waterford zoning regulations revised to the effective date of December fourteenth, twenty twenty-two. Exhibit three is a public hearing notice run in the day newspaper, April eleventh, twenty twenty-three and April eighteen, twenty twenty-three. Exhibit four are referral letters. Exhibit four A, referral to Southeastern Connecticut. Council of Governments, excuse me. Exhibit four B, referral to the town of East Line. Exhibit four C, referral to the city of New London. Or D, referral to town of Montville and exhibit four E, referral to the town of Groton. Exhibit five, referral response from the Southeastern Connecticut Council of Governments. Exhibit six is a staff report.
Okay, do we have anything uh for the record in terms of the applicant?
We do have a, we have comment uh that if if you desire, can read into the record for um. Uh from one of our, from one of our members of the commission.
Um yeah, we'll read that in the comment section, but as the applicant, we don't have any presentation by you guys or anything, right? You can just open it up to the public?
Yeah, right, exactly. We can do that.
Okay, so we're gonna open up the public hearing to the members of the public with respect to the application of this commission to amend. The laundry list of zoning regulations as they apply to accessory apartments and accessory dwelling units and the definitions. Um would any member of the public wish to speak? If you can use the raised hand function of of. Zoom, that would be great. Okay, well, or or just physically raise your hand, that's great too. Okay, uh Ms. Thorman? You're on mute though, if you could unmute yourself.
Sorry, can you hear me now?
Sure.
Yeah, okay, so um thank you for uh allowing us to to come to this meeting. Um I have been asking um for, you know, about six months now about ADUs specifically. Because um I think that uh this is an uh an idea and a project that's sweeping the country in terms of people wanting to live more conservatively. And um still have a nice exterior and nice environment around them. Um. And and my my question was for specifically for Waterford, do you guys have any site plans? Any locations that you would be willing, I guess because you own the land, it would be yours to sell. Um whether there's some specific rate card for that, whether you, there would be certain restrictions and guidelines, which I'm sure there are. And um you know, most importantly is, is it, is it a concept you would embrace? And what, what, what size land would be the minimum? Would it be a quarter acre? Would it be a half acre? Would it be? Now, these homes again are small. They're eight hundred to uh square feet to a thousand square feet. And on one level, most of them on one level. Um I don't think they need any sort of foundation built. Um uh you know, the 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 problem, not problem, but what would have to be looked into specifically is water and electricity. But again, my question is, do you have the land? If you do have the land, would you be willing to sell it? And where would it be?
Okay, um the this is a, this is a public hearing for the amendment to the accessory dwelling unit regulations.
Okay.
We really can't get into a back and forth necessarily with the public, but I don't know, I I if we're on the same issue. Are we on the same issue?
I mean, I I I I've been, I've, I was told by um your group today that this meeting was happening and I should attend it and ask certain questions. Which is why I'm here. You know, whether the ADUs are something that y- you will will embrace and and try to. Get done or not at all. And I've been talking to John on and off throughout the year actually about it. And um.
Uh if I, if I may, um.
Yeah.
Uh I believe what Ms. uh Thormans, she's referring to, there's a property, I believe, that's adjacent to her uh sister's property that she was.
Right.
Purchasing from the town. And uh we can discuss that. That's not necessarily what we're discussing here tonight. We're really talking about the adoption of. Regulations to permit accessory dwelling units. Uh in in the, in an expansion of kind of how we do already. Uh we're we're, we've kind of revised the regulations to loosen them up and and uh grant them. To uh make it easier for people to get accessory dwelling units in the town of Waterford. And I, you know, if you wanna contact me offline, we can, I'd be happy to discuss your other issue. Uh but that's really the focus of the hearing tonight.
So so Jonathan, you're saying for me to come down and just sit with you alone if, you know, we, I know we've spoken several times. But I would be happy to come down and sit with you to get some more specific information about this land that's on my sister's property.
Yes, that, but that part we can discuss, but the for, that's outside of this public hearing right now. We're really trying to focus on the actual regulations.
I I apologize to that. I was told that we should be at this meeting, but so.
Okay, we we don't, we don't wanna restrict anybody from speaking. I just wanna make sure you knew what we're we're dealing with tonight.
Yeah, I, I mean, I I was told to to come on to this meeting tonight, and so obviously that was not.
No, no, we want you to be here to understand that.
Okay.
You, part of what you're deal, what you're asking is pertinent to what we're discussing. Uh the other portion, we can, like I said, we can, we can discuss that and uh.
Privately, okay, okay, all right. Well, thank you. Appreciate it.
Great. Is there any other member of the public that wishes to speak on? PL twenty-three dash four, if you can use the raised hand function, so we don't miss you. Okay, Mr. Doherty? At least it's coming through as Daniel Doherty.
Yes, that's correct. Yes. Uh yeah, Dan Doherty from Dimmick Road. Uh the the one um item that I thought might be. I I know the whole concept is wonderful and I look forward to it, but I thought the twenty feet, the the height of the buildings. How did you arrive at the twenty feet? I twenty feet is a bit of a challenge for uh like a an apartment over in a garage. Uh uh had they considered to go to to twenty-five to thirty? Any comment on that? Or would it be considered to, would you consider going beyond the twenty?
Well, like I I explained to the last person, Mr. Doherty, we don't really get into a back and forth on this. We will take your comments or questions that you have. And we can, we can address them when we discuss this, but we really don't get into a back and forth with.
Okay.
During the public hearing. So so you're concerned noted that you're interested in having us consider to go to twenty-five feet?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Is there anything else that you have?
No, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Sure, anyone else that would like to speak on PL dash twenty-three dash five? I don't see anybody. Do you see anybody, John? Or Mark?
I do not.
Okay, so I'm gonna ask three times then. Uh is there any member of the public wishing to address the mission with respect to PL dash twenty-three? Uh dash four, application of the Waterford Planning and Zoning Commission to amend the following. Sections of the Waterford Zoning Regulations with respect to definitions, accessory apartments and accessory dwelling units. Is there any member of the public wishing to address the commission with respect to PL dash twenty-three dash four? Application of the Waterford Planning and Zoning Commission to amend sections of the Waterford Zoning Regulations with respect to. Application of the Waterford Planning and Zoning Commission to amend sections of the Waterford Zoning Regulations with respect to. Definitions, accessory apartments and accessory dwelling units as they relate to accessory dwelling units. And one more time, is there any member of the public wish to address the commission with respect to PL dash twenty-three dash four? Application of the Waterford Planning and Zoning Commission to amend the sections of the Waterford Zoning Regulations with respect to definitions, accessory apartments, accessory dwelling units. As they relate to accessory dwelling units. Okay, seeing no one else wishing to address the commission, is there a motion to close the public hearing? Anyone?
Make a motion to close public hearing.
Hey, motion made by Karen to close the public hearing. Seconded by.
I'll second it.
Tim Condorino, all in favor of closing public hearing, aye?
Aye.
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 Aye, five to nothing. Move to application review, number five for the same thing, PL dash twenty-three dash four. Application of the Waterford Planning and Zoning Commission to amend the following sections of the Waterford Zoning Regulations. Section one definitions, sections three point nine point eleven, three point nine point twelve, three point three six accessory apartments, three point three nine accessory dwelling units. Four point one point seven, four point two point eight, five point one point seven, five point two point eleven, six point one point eight, six point two point eleven. Six A point four point six, seven point one point nine, seven A point two point seven. Eight point one point seventeen, ten point two point sixteen, seventeen point eleven point eleven, seventeen point two point three. As they relate to accessory dwelling units. Is there any? Discussion. By members of the commission? We've, we've uh went round and round on these regulations for many months. Uh I think, you know, John, to the extent that you've been here and Mark certainly beforehand and Abby that we've done a great job trying to. Be as flexible as we can for the citizens to, to be able to have these ADUs, I think we, the regulations are pretty good. Um maybe they need to be amended in the future at some point if we have some issues, but I, I think it's a great start, I think the commission and the staff did a great job on these. Um anyone else have any comments?
Um yeah, I do, I do, Greg.
Sure.
Yeah, I want to echo what you said, that I really appreciate all the hard work that the commission and our staff have put into this, um I know it's been a long time coming and. At least for me, when we voted on the opt-out, my concern was that we wouldn't be here tonight doing what we're doing, uh so I'm glad to see that. That we've, you know, put in the hard work and we've got to where we are. Um I did want to briefly address and discuss that height issue that Mr. Um his dotary uh. Raised and. I think he, the concern that he had mentioned was that um. That he thought that perhaps twenty feet uh for a height limit wasn't high enough, but I, I think actually it's, it's more um. It's more relaxed than that because in three point three six point one point four, the. Um we're, you know, if we adopt this, we'll be setting the, the maximum height for a detached ADU as the. The greater of either twenty feet or the, the height of the principal building, so um. I'm not sure if that addresses his concern, but I, I think for me, I'm satisfied with the uh, the height requirements that we've set.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else with respect to these regulations?
Yeah, if I can just uh kind of. Kind of uh uh. Go on.
That's him?
No, it's uh.
No, Mark.
Mark.
Oh, Mark, okay, I'm sorry.
Uh just uh uh to kind of go on with um Tim's, Tim's comment um as well in addressing Mr. Doherty. Uh the, the maximum height restriction to twenty feet just applies to of existing accessory structures. Not uh new, new construction, so um uh the idea was that existing. Accessory structures um would be, would be restricted to increase the height of that structure up, up to. Up to twenty feet, because it currently being used as accessory structures, sheds or garages. Uh so that's where, that's where the only area that we have a height restriction uh of twenty feet, that's where that applies.
Anyone else have any comments? I, I'm satisfied as well that, that I think the twenty feet and, and the way it's written would accommodate the second floor on, on a, on a garage. And uh with, with some of the other um aspects of the regulations, so. I appreciate the, the commentary, but I think we do have it covered for you. Uh anyone else have any comments on these? Karen? Doris, you have anything? Okay.
I, uh sorry, this is Karen, I'd just like to echo Tim in saying that um I appreciate all the hard work that everyone's put in and that. Um it's nice to finally be at this meeting and having this vote.
Great, thank you. Any, anyone else? Okay, anyone want a minute, excuse me, anyone want to make a motion?
Uh sure, I'll make a motion, Greg. I will move that uh we find that um. On April twenty-sixth of twenty twenty-two, we had approved a opt-out of the provisions of. Uh Public Act twenty-one dash twenty-nine, the state legislation um creating the possibility of these ADUs. Um and further that uh you know, following our opt-out, the RTM took action on June sixth, twenty twenty-two. And voted unanimously to opt out of the provisions of Public Act twenty-nine, twenty-one dash twenty-nine. Uh further that uh our application here tonight, public uh PL twenty-three dash four meets the requirements of section twenty-eight of the Waterford Zoning Regulations. Uh further that PL twenty-three dash four meets the requirements of uh general. Uh Connecticut General Statutes, chapter one twenty-four, section eight dash three, uh which governs the changes to zoning regulations and zoning districts. Um and further that the uh proposed regulation amendments are consistent with the twenty-twelve Plan of Preservation, Conservation and Development. Um in meeting the stated goals of the residential development guide by encouraging a variety of housing types and densities. To meet the housing needs of current and future residents. Um sorry, my light is flashing overhead here, I hope that's not messing with the camera. Um and further, the uh proposed regulation amendments are consistent with a defined strategy um. The defined strategy in the community character chapter of the, of the Plan of Conservation and Development. By allowing uh an ADU to be located on a parcel that contains a single family dwelling, thereby encouraging the preservation of undeveloped land. Um further that the proposed regulation amendments are consistent with section four point seven point three of the town's recently adopted housing plan. By updating the zoning regulations relative to accessory dwelling units. Um and further that the commission uh approve uh application PL twenty-three dash four to amend the zoning regulations for accessory dwelling units. Uh and to adopt um these findings that I, I just mentioned.
Great, is there a second on that motion?
I'll second it.
Okay, motion made by Tim Bleesdale, seconded by Tim Condorino. Um this is almost one year to the date of, uh to the day of, of when we. Decided to opt out of these and, and come up with our own regulations. Which um. I think we got it right, it took some time, but we did get it right. Um any other discussion on the motion before we take a vote? No, okay, all in favor of PL? Dash twenty-three dash four, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
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 Aye. Aye, five to nothing, thank you, everyone. Okay, now we're on to item number six administrative review.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, we need a second motion now to establish the effective date. To May twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three.
I want to make that motion.
I'll uh move that the um. The amendment be effective uh May twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three.
I'll second.
Second, made, motion made by Tim Bleesdale, seconded by Karen Burnett for effective date of May twenty-fourth, you said, twenty twenty-three, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Okay, uh what we, what I did forget to do was to read Bert's comments into the record, but let's accept his letter. Um. Into the record for that?
Yes, we did, we actually established the exhibit number seven.
You did, okay, great, okay, thank you. Uh no, item number six administrative review, is there anything?
We have nothing.
Okay, uh item number seven correspondence? I think.
No.
And uh item number eight, commission business, any project updates for us, the public on anything that's of significance?
Uh no, we are, don't have anything to report. Um. I will say, though, if. That uh we do just want to introduce our, we have our zoning enforcement officer slash zoning official on the, on the meeting with us tonight, uh his name's Wayne, Wayne, you want to wave? Everybody. He just came on with us two weeks ago and he's uh. He's been catching up quick and starting and getting in uh and, and filling a very important position in town, dealing with FEMA regulations and zoning. Compliance and making the, you know, really the boots on the ground out there, so just wanted to uh acknowledge that he's on the meeting with us tonight.
Welcome, Wayne, and we all have, most of us have our last names on it, yours says Wayne's iPhone, I don't think that's your last name, what's your last name? Okay.
It's um Wayne Scott, Wayne Scott, I don't know if Wayne can you, he, he doesn't have audio on his, or he's connecting now.
Okay, well, welcome.
So, one more thing.
Welcome, Wayne.
Um just to acknowledge that there was a correspondence from the first electman's office. To that was forwarded to everybody today regarding uh an upcoming eight twenty-four for Southwest School.
Okay, so we're gonna put that in, accept that as item number seven for correspondence.
Yes.
Okay, great. No other updates, any else from the commission members?
Greg, I have one question.
Sure.
We had talked about an additional P O C D meeting. Have we talked about any dates for that yet?
No, we haven't, um. I think I've been a little lax in getting my comments in, I think we got your comments and Tim's. I don't know if we got anybody else, or. And Bert. Um so I think I have to get some comments in, but I'll, I'll discuss that with John and and Mark, see if we can come up with a date. And we can set it at the next meeting.
Yep. Okay, yeah, I just, I'm trying to deal with Little League and soccer, so.
Yeah, okay.
Want to get you guys in there.
I, and I can't remember if uh if Doris had joined us by the time we started doing that commentary, um. Have we shared those goals with Doris that we were commenting on?
Uh.
I don't think you have, because I'm not sure.
Yeah, okay, so Mark and John, can you get the, whatever Doris would need to get caught up to speed on the P O C D?
Absolutely, sure.
The slide deck, the goals, what, what we're, what we were tasked with.
Yep, I will make sure, uh Doris will make sure we get that to you uh tomorrow, the next day, okay?
Great. Okay, um with nothing else, how about item number nine adjournment?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Thanks Karen, motion made by Karen, it's seconded by. Tim Blees. Oh, Tim Condorino, okay, all in favor of adjourned?
Aye.
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 Aye, okay, great, thank you, so our next meeting is May.
Nine.
May ninth.
May ninth, great, can see everyone then.
Okay.
Good night, everyone.